Thank you. I'll say that again. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the September 24th, 2025 Meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Longmont. The first order of business, well, we have a very full agenda, which is why we're starting early, but the first order of business is roll call by, I have her title as Recording Secretary, Jane Madrid.
That's it. Chair Height?
Is present.
Commissioner Lang?
Here.
Commissioner Boone?
Here.
Vice Chair Pollan?
Present.
Commissioner Saunders?
Here.
Commissioner Earl?
Here.
Commissioner Arment?
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is to read the City of Longmont's land acknowledgement. I have my own version thereof. We acknowledge that the City of Longmont sits on the traditional territories of the nations of the Cheyenne, Arapaho, and Ute, and other indigenous peoples. We endeavor to honor the history and the living and spiritual connection of these first peoples with this land. We commit to face the injustices that happened when these lands were taken and to educate our communities, ourselves, and our children to ensure that these injustices never happen again. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Communications. Planning Director, Pendleton?
Nothing other than to say good evening all and happy fall. Good to see you this September.
Thank you very much. There's snow in those hills behind us. Any other communications? Thank you very much. Moving right along, the public is invited to be heard. Any members of the public that are, that wish to speak not on a matter that's before the commission tonight are invited to come up. Seeing none, I will close that opportunity and move on to approval of last month's meeting, I'm sorry, meeting minutes. Have they, I was not here. This is the August 27th, 2025 minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion discussion? Sorry. Vice Chair Pollan?
I don't know.
There you go.
No, I turned it off.
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
I move approval of the August 27th, 2025 minutes.
Are there any seconds? Commissioner Boone?
I'll second that.
Fantastic. Put it to vote.
Commissioner Lang?
Aye.
Commissioner Boone?
Aye.
Vice Chair Pollan?
Yes.
Chair Height?
Will abstain.
Commissioner Saunders?
Yes.
Commissioner Earl?
Aye.
Commissioner Arment?
Aye.
Chair, that passes six approvals, one abstention.
Thank you very much. Onto the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. There are three items. The first one is Matter 7A, 1154 Venice Street setback variance presented by Senior Planner Phil Taylor. Mr. Taylor, the floor is yours.
We're gonna read it.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry to clarify too. This is a variance for which the Planning and Zoning Commission sits as the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment has five members and the approval of the Board of Adjustments requires a supermajority. Planning and Zoning Commission consists of seven members, two of whom Commissioner Saunders and Commissioner Lang are recusing themselves for this agenda item. Now the floor is yours.
Thank you for that. Good evening, Commissioners. Again, Phil Taylor, Senior Planner. I am here to provide a brief overview of Item 7A, which is a request for a setback variance. The specific request for this evening is a variance to allow a five-foot front setback where 15 feet is required and a five-foot rear setback where six feet is required for a proposed detached garage. The subject property located at 1154 Venice Street totals approximately 0.17 acres and is zoned residential single family. You can see from the image here that the subject property is a corner lot, so it is required to meet front setback requirements along 12th Avenue and Venice Street. You can now see the land survey plat for the subject property showing the existing primary structure and its setback to all property lines. The next image here is a site plan showing the primary structure and the proposed detached garage. You can see the setbacks shown here are five feet from 12th Avenue, again, required 15 feet for front setback requirements, and then five feet adjacent to the alley. These are some proposed elevations provided by the applicant. And then a slide indicating that all required public notice has been met. And then an indication of the dimensional standards from the Land Use Code that are being asked for a variance. So the residential single-family zone district requires 15 feet for front yard setbacks and six feet for the rear yard. One other standard from the Land Use Code aside from the corner lot setback requirements is the standard that accessory structures shall not be located closer to a front property line than the primary structure. So if the variance is approved, you will also be allowing an accessory structure closer to the front property line. Applicable review criteria from the Land Use Code are seen here, 1502055 and 1502060I. All of this information has been included in the staff report. They are shown here. And then criteria specific to variances. Have answered any questions? Thank you. I know the applicant is also here for questions.
We'll move on and allow the applicant to make his presentation or its presentation. Sorry.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I'm William Neff. I live at 1154 Venice Street with my wife. We bought the house last year. We moved in at the end of September. It had one garage, which of course my wife got, and I was parking on a concrete slab in the back and I thought, well, I can do this. And last spring, I turned 80 in March, had heart surgery in April, and decided that I didn't want to shove snow and ice and scrape ice off the car another winter as I got older. And so we worked with Republic Garages to try and fit a secondary garage in the back. The existing garage, the whole property was developed sort of hodgepodge and with additions here and there, not necessarily up to code and so forth, and we didn't want to touch the existing structure, afraid of what we would get into. And so we looked at a freestanding garage, made it smaller than what had been proposed as for a typical garage because I have a small car and it would fit into the smaller garage. Also, the back, we've re-landscaped most of the yard except for the back portion where the garage will go. There was a raspberry patch there that had gone to seed and was basically an eyesore for the neighbors and everybody else. And all the elm trees in the alley, reseeded it with more elm trees, so there was actually blocking the view sightlines into the alley from 12th Street from the west. And so the plan is to re-landscape, put in the new garage, re-landscape, make it attractive, and not obstruct the sightlines turning into the alley. Turns out 12th Street, the property across the alley does have a structure that obstructs that sightline, but from our side, we just decided to make it so that it was clearly unobstructed turning in, coming down 12th Street from the west. And so anyhow, so if you can help me not have to scrape ice and snow off the car this next winter, that would be, despite global warming, that would be really useful. So if you have any questions?
Thank you. Are there any right now for the applicant? I have a couple of questions. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
We reserve the right to call you back up though.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
I have two questions. First of all, Jeremy, overall, in the various procedure, whether, my question is whether or not 1502055, which is the general standards of review for any development proposal, apply to variances because I read that there's possibly an option out if the other, the procedure has its own set of standards and criterion, which variances do. Your advice on that? Does 1505055, 1502055 apply?
Good evening, Chair Height, Jeremy Drell, Assistant City Attorney. Excellent question. And I've never answered that question before.
And what I'm looking at for your reference is 15020604.
Yep.
Which says that the procedures for variances shall follow the corporate review procedures of 1502055B, except with these following modifications. And then 1502055 says 055 applies unless there are other conditions. And so it's not that big of a deal, but just for clarification, going forward, it's, you know, do the general review criterion always apply for variances?
So Chair Height, I would say yes, it does apply. So the review procedure is talking about 1502050B, which is the notice, applications, the DRC process, the neighborhood meetings. And there's nothing to the contrary within the additional review criteria for variances section that says the 1502055, all criteria doesn't apply. So since there's nothing to the contrary, my opinion is that the commission should consider the criteria laid forth in 1502055, which is the general review criteria for all applications in addition to the specific criteria under 1502060I5A.
Okay. Appreciate that. It's kind of where I was coming out, but I wanted to.
Keep me in my terms.
Well, get your opinion. Put you on the record. Mr. Taylor, next question is to you.
Don't forget it's also a public hearing item.
Oh, thank you very much. Before I get to that though, it is a public hearing. Phil, there are no recommendations here, which is unique sometimes to variances. Do you have a position you could put on the record as to why planning staff doesn't make recommendations for variances?
It is a good question that I'm going to throw to Jeremy.
Thank you. Back at you.
Good evening again, Commissioners. So when, when it's considering a BOA and not tied to a development application, my understanding is planning, development services staff do not provide a recommendation because it's the board's, it's the commission's discretion whether or not it meets the criteria.
Okay.
So if it was tied to a development application, they sometimes would, but since this is a standalone variance request, they traditionally do not make a recommendation.
Fair enough. And then Vice Chair, or yeah, Vice Chair Pollan just reminded me that this is a public hearing to which the public is invited to speak and provide its comments, if any, to this, to this variance. Are there any members of the public or any signed up? Seeing none, I will close that aspect of, of this proceeding and move back to questions for staff and the applicant. I have one more myself for Phil, which is that as I read the setback requirements for properties that face alleyways, in particular the front dwelling, the, the front yard for dwelling with an alleyway access, an alley garage access is only 10 feet. This particular property, I think, the setback 20-plus feet, 29 feet. It could be setback 10 feet. And then as I understand, the variance is, we are, the, the side yard variance, I'm sorry, the side yard needs to match the front yard setback? Is that correct?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Great. Do you agree with me first and foremost that for a front yard with a alley garage access, the setback is only 10 feet wide? That's from the table 15030202.
I'm gonna pull it up right here. Give me one second.
Included with your materials.
The rear yard and setback of an alley is six feet.
Got it. I'm talking about front yard with an alley.
The, the front yard with alley garage access is 10 feet, yes.
10 feet, great. And then I wanted to make sure I understood that the standard that we're seeking a variance from is that the side yard needs to be setback as far as the front yard is? They have to match?
It should be behind the primary dwelling and meet front setbacks.
Okay. But here the, the setback would be 10 feet. It could be, could be 10 feet.
It could be 10 feet.
Gotcha. All right.
They're requesting five.
And they want to move it to five. Great. Okay. Just wanted to make sure I could put that magnitude into perspective. Moving forward, Commissioner Boone, I will recognize.
Thank you. So there are a number of reasons that dwellings have setbacks. We don't need to talk about all of them, but one of them, especially where we have an alley and a street, is to provide an unobstructed view from the street to the alley or the alley to the street. And regardless of whether we're talking a 20-foot setback or a 15-foot setback, or in this case, maybe even a 10-foot setback, the, the bulk of that garage is in the triangle that is formed, oh, I'm not, I'm not explaining this very well. If you come, if you come, say for talking purposes, 15 feet off the corner of the alley and the street, in each direction, draw a diagonal line, that's the, that's the view corridor. And it's a safety issue. And the same thing applies to fences that are And the same thing applies to fences that are put in that location. You can't put a six-foot fence that's solid in that location because it obstructs the view. A building obstructs the view even more so. And I think the criteria for fences are, they have to be under three feet high and, and fifty percent, and/or fifty percent open, so that you still have a view corridor across the fence or through the fence. And with a building in that location, you don't have that. So for that reason, and I also realize that your neighbor across the alley is in violation, it is in violation of that code requirement, but we're not talking to them tonight. So for that reason, I'm not able to support this variance. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Vice Chair Poland.
Thank you. Mr. Neff, can you please come up for a quick second? Can you walk us through the way the house is configured, where the front door is, where the current garage is, and where the access to the garage comes off of? I assume it's the alley, but can you walk us through that real quickly?
Yeah, we think our front yard, as I understood, was on Venice Street. And then I'd never heard of the side door setback on another street being considered a front yard. Okay, which is another, that's interesting. But anyhow, but I was out there when the young man from the city was out there looking at the sightlines, and he actually looked at the twelve-foot, twelve-foot diagonal sightline going into the alley. And we're not obstructing that. So we're not obstructing the sightline coming from the west on 12th Street, turning into the alley. And the garage we set back is close to the existing garage as we could to get away from that obstruction. And the idea then is to make sure there's low-profile material planted around the, on the 12th Street side going into the alley so we're not obstructing these sightlines.
So that you are, if you just, if you just look at the sightline, you're not obstructing.
Yes. Mr. Neff, so the garage is currently that for, the entrance to the garage is currently the section that's fourteen point two feet that's facing the alley, correct? Okay. And then your front door is showing with a walk going out to Venice, right?
Pardon me?
The front door is showing a walkway out to, with a sidewalk out to Venice, right?
Um, yeah.
Okay. That's all I have for you right now? Phil?
Well, if I could say, in fact, recently XL had to redo the street in front of us, dig it all up because of leaking gas lines. And you could smell gas all the way up and down along Venice Street. And my wife has harassed XL over and over again to solve the problem. It was actually in the water line and the, in Venice Street, the, the access to the water line. It was above the combustible limit for gas fumes. And so they spent several nights reconstructing that gas line in front of the house. So we're trying to be safe.
Okay, thank you. Phil, can you walk us through how the city considers this plot of land? As far as what's the front yard, what's considered the backyard, and how it was mentioned that the area off of 12th is also considered the front yard? Can, can you walk us through what's considered the front yard for this particular piece of property?
I can, yes. So as you can see from the site plan here, we have a front yard adjacent to 12th Avenue along the north property line and a front yard adjacent to Venice Street. We have one rear property line adjacent to the alley and then a side property line adjacent, along the southern property line. And one additional point of clarification, if we have any questions about the vision clearance triangle or site triangles, we did bring engineering staff specifically to discuss that. So if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for right now?
Great. Jerry Boone, do you want to pull up anybody? I will recognize.
Sure, if you have engineering staff here that can justify that this building is not within the sightlines as required by the development code, I'd love to hear it.
Sorry. Good evening, I'm Samuel Lanterne, engineer with the City of Longmont Public Works Department. In this particular case, the property line is setback from the back of sidewalk by between seven and eight feet and is about thirteen feet back from the edge of pavement. The site triangle is drawn from where essentially the paved paths of the street intersect. So that puts it, the site triangles kind of point to beginning ways off their property rather than on their lot, on their lot corner.
It's how many feet? Thirteen feet back? I wonder if there's a sidewalk there?
Yeah, the, they're about, their property line is about seven to eight feet back from the edge of the sidewalk and an additional five feet back from the edge of pavement. From like the, the car path.
It's at the line where we're seeing what looks to be a fence?
The fence comes up to the sidewalk. Phil, do you have the land plat available? The land survey plat? Am I able to have that? There's another document that shows this better.
The tree part, the tree lawn.
So there's a sidewalk and then there's...
There's a sidewalk, there's not a tree lawn.
The sidewalk's five feet from the...
Okay, so if that, if that's a sidewalk, man, I'd like to see it.
Yeah, it's a little image there.
I don't think, I don't think there's a tree lawn.
So is that, is it, are they seeing that eventually now? Is there a way to share that?
In the, the land survey plat, attachment six?
Sorry for the delay here.
Jane, do you, is there a way to access our materials?
It's not, I don't think it's in the materials in the packet.
Attachment six is a land survey.
It is in the packet, yes.
Oh, is it in the packet?
It is in the packet, yes. Just not in the presentation.
Oh, sorry.
Grant, while we're talking about this, there are only a few neighborhoods in the city with these diagonal lots. Do you know their history or why? I mean, does it, does it go back to the Chicago Colony days?
Chair, Members of Commission, I don't know the history. I will tell you, historically, there was an era, and I believe it was probably about the time this neighborhood was developed, that it was popular to try to take advantage of sun exposure. So that could have been the rationale for the design, but beyond that, I don't know the specific history. Yeah, and while I have a live mic, yeah, to clarify, there is not a tree lawn per se. It is curb line, sidewalk, and then landscaping.
Sam, I missed your last name. What is that?
Sorry?
Your last name?
Lanterne, L-A-N-T-E-R-N-I-E-R.
And you're an engineer? That is fantastic. You said, I'm Sam the engineer. Lanterne.
Yes.
Fantastic.
So you can see this exhibit here, this is our, sorry, I'm not able to rotate it. This is our sidewalk. And this is their lot corner. With this drawing scaled, you can measure it at about seven to eight feet from this corner to the edge of the sidewalk, and it's about thirteen from the corner to the edge of pavement. So for, I'm not, not aware of the history of this area, but this, the property line is setback from the edge of the road.
Yep.
If you draw a triangle origin at this point here, where my cursor is, that's where the alley meets the traveled way in the street. And draw a thirty-foot triangle. So the standard for where two streets intersect or where a street and an alley intersect and there's no additional concerns is a thirty-foot triangle. So thirty foot on the two sides connects through between them. It appears to essentially clip the edge of the shed, but the shed is mostly out of the site triangle.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Neff's new garage is bigger than the shed?
Oh, my apologies, meant the shed, their garage, not any sort of shed.
Okay. The existing single-car garage or the new proposed two-car garage, I think?
The structure, as shown here, is outside of the site triangle. The proposed garage, which will be in this area, hits the, hits the edge of, the edge of the site triangle.
Do you know by how much?
I do not know by how much. I have it sketched out on another document that I can look at, but it's not. I would be hesitant to use that as a reference for decision-making. It's all just scaling out the dimensions on the plat myself.
Let me ask you this, is it inches or feet? In your estimation?
My estimation, a couple of feet.
Couple of feet, okay.
Yeah.
Jerry, Commissioner Boone, anything more you want to inquire?
I just want to clarify that the triangle you're saying is a thirty-foot back? I thought it, I thought it was the same as the setback. So if we had a fifteen-foot setback, it would be a
So...
fifteen feet on each side? Is it thirty feet on each side?
The, the site triangle is measured at thirty feet when you're looking at the intersection of two streets or a street in an alley. It is fifteen feet when you have a private access onto a street.
Okay, and we're talking the edge of the street, not the center of the street?
Correct, the edge of the street, the edge of pavement.
I'm not convinced that it's out of the site triangle. I mean, I'm just, I'm sketching on this little site plan that, that we were given.
I think Mr. Lanterne is saying that there is a two-foot
Overlap.
Overlap at least.
At least.
It's, it's small, I'm not, I don't have the number calculated out.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, if it really is that small of an encroachment, the garage conceivably could be made smaller.
I don't know what the constraints in the size of the garage are, so I'm not comfortable.
It's fifteen feet by eighteen feet and, and a one-car garage, that's a pretty big one-car garage, but...
I think it's a two-car garage, Mr. Neff? One-car garage?
One, it's fifty feet wide.
That was erroneously sketched. I realized that.
Okay, that's all I've got for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alright. Phil, I'm trying to make some sense of this and I apologize. So I'm looking now at this, the land survey plot that we have up there, and I'm trying to understand the setbacks. The communication to, to Planning and Zoning Commission referenced fifteen feet setbacks on both Venice and 12th. Based on the chair's questions before, it sounds like that should be ten. Is that correct? That we should be looking for a ten-foot setback on both?
I interpreted the dimensional standard as a primary structure with an attached garage with access to the alley. So this is an accessory structure, so I'm giving, I consider it a fifteen-foot front setback.
Sorry, say that again. So the, the main structure has a ten feet. The, the detached garage has a different setback?
The detached garage is an accessory structure, so we're gonna consider that separately from our primary structure, I believe.
Okay. Is there, so that the property does not actually go up to the right-of-way of 12th Avenue? Is that correct? There's some other, you were saying it, the property line is setback from the sidewalk from the pavement. Is that some other property in between there or a right-of-way or, you know, what is that exactly?
It, I mean, the northern property line goes up to the right-of-way.
Northern property line goes up to the right-of-way, but the, based on what we were just looking at in the land survey plat, there is still that gap in between the property line and the walkway. So there's right-of-way that's not being used as right-of-way. Is that right? Or, I'm probably saying this wrong, I'm just trying to understand, I'm trying to wrap my brain around this a little bit.
Okay. Can you ask your question one more time? I have the survey in front of me.
Yeah, I'm just try, I'm trying to understand on the 12th Avenue side of this, the property line does not appear to go to the walkway or the street. And I'm trying to figure out what is that space in between? Is that part of the right-of-way and therefore it runs directly on the right-of-way? Or is there something else going on there that, why, why is it the fifteen feet when it doesn't touch the street, basically?
So setbacks are taken from the property line?
Yeah.
So fifteen feet from the front property line. Am I missing the question?
No, I think, I mean, you're, you're answering, I'm trying to understand, though, why the property line is not at the effect, you know, what you would think of as the property line. So why the setback in this case is...
Why is there curb and sidewalk not on...
Yeah, because, because the effective setback is larger than the legal setback to the property line.
It is a, is an old subdivision. I cannot speak to how they plotted the right-of-way.
Fair enough. Alright, then I'm, I'm trying to go through my brain the criteria evaluation we have and the review criteria for variances. And where I'm getting stuck here is, you know, that special circumstances exist that would result in undue hardship or practical differences, difficulties for the owners of such property. And whether it can have any beneficial use without the variance, et cetera. And whether, whether it can be addressed for some means other than a variance. I understand the applicant wants to have a detached garage because there's potentially questionable construction on the house and getting into that may open up a whole other can of worms. I'm not sure in my mind that meets the variance criteria because there is still beneficial use without the variance of the property. There is the potential to, you know, not have to shovel snow and ice off of a car without the variance. So I, I am struggling with that and I would love to, you know, if there's additional information that would help me get comfortable with that, please share it. Otherwise, I'm not convinced it meets the criteria in my mind.
I am so sorry. Did you want to answer? I think the question was posed to you. Phil, if you don't have an answer, I'm gonna move on. Or the applicant too. I mean, Mr. Neff, do you want to try to answer that question?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure I understand the question, but I should say that we have flexibility in positioning the garage and even making it a little bit smaller if, in fact, it is a problem with the sightline. And if we're right on the edge of meeting that criteria with a thirty-foot hypotenuse on the triangle, is it's easy, you know, the garage has not been built yet. So it can be built any place. It can be shoved closer to the existing garage. Any number of possibilities are made a little bit smaller if necessary. But, you know, we can fit the numbers if necessary. But, you know, we can fit the numbers if necessary.
Commissioner Amat, I'm gonna recognize you.
So, looking through the uh, the factors listed in fifteen oh two oh six oh uh one five A, um the one that stands out to me um for this evaluation is uh whether the standard can be addressed through some means other than a variance. And so, sorry, you just went sat down, Mister Neff. My apologies if I could ask you a question. What alternatives have you explored to a variance and why were those avenue, if you did explore other avenues? Why were those deemed not viable and the variance deemed necessary? Did you look at other options or?
In the front of the lot? And then they added on a what they called a music room, which is actually a bedroom, onto the back of that poured a slab and then poured the con- the new garo- slab for the new garage behind that for a one car garage. And um, and the wiring is weird. I didn't, you know, it's very hard to get in there and do anything with the existing structures and the wiring. But we left like a three foot walkway um around the current garage um between that and the new garage that we proposed and then the opening and the fence going into the backyard. So in principle, we could move the garage three feet closer and three feet to the old garage as well as three feet closer to the gate into the backyard. So if, if the only problem is the sightline based upon that triangle from the edge of the um pavement into the alley.
Did you ever at any point consider an attached garage and see if you could fit an attached garage without the variance required or was that never explored?
Basically, there's no way to attach anything without destroying the existing structure. So, I mean, and it's all concrete block. And it was all done probably without a permit back in the sixties sometime. And when we, you know, we were replacing flooring in the house after we bought it before we moved in and it turned out that whole back section of the house had asbestos tile in it. And so we had to go through the asbestos remediation on that whole back section of the house. And, you know, my concern is with the existing wiring in the house and things like that, that I didn't wanna touch the existing house. It's better to have something standing alone, but it could be moved you know, a few feet here and there in order to make it work with the sightlines. Okay, and I have a small car. The only reason that where the, we have that fifteen foot proposal for the width of the garage is I wanted to have a little workbench in there to put my tools, which are in my wife's garage right now. And I hear about that frequently. So it's just a matter of having a space there to um put toolboxes and stuff.
Okay, thank you. Um I think that was my only question for now. Thank you.
First, your poll.
Phil, are there any regulations about how close the garage can be to the existing structure?
I believe there is through building code requirements and I do not know what they are.
Do we have anybody who would happen to know that? Grant.
I'll have to admit that I don't know the specifics. Um there are requirements for separation, but they can be overcome depending on penetrations. Um so theoretically, you could have the building abutting or the proposed building abutting the existing building. Um if it, you met penetration and fire resistance requirements.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna take the floor back, which is to try, Phil, to pin you down and maybe get Grant um or Director Penland to, to weigh into, um which is what actually is the setback here? Is it ten feet and the ten feet has to be met on the side? Or is it well, it's thirty, but is it, it's setback thirty now, is it, or is it fifteen?
The setback from the front property line is fifteen feet. So fifteen feet from the property line along Twelfth Avenue.
The fifteen oh three oh two oh chart, which says or which I thought, we clarified that a front yard dwelling with an alley access with an alley garage access is only ten feet. That doesn't apply here?
This is not a dwelling, no. This is a detached accessory structure.
I'm talking about with the, I understand that the, that the garage is a detached structure. My understanding of what we're trying to match here is that the side yard setback has to match the front yard setback. I'm trying to determine is the front yard setback ten feet? Pursuant to this chart?
If you're building a new home with an alley loaded garage, the front setback would be ten feet, yes.
Okay. And the standard for a side yard, which is a second front yard on a corner lot has to match the front yard. Is that correct? So that the setback on twenty, I don't even know what street we're on.
Yes.
They, they need to be the same. The standard is ten feet if it were a new house? The standard is ten feet if it's an old house? I mean, if he wanted to rebuild his house, he could build up to ten feet.
Correct, if alley access, yes.
And this is an alley access garage, correct?
Correct.
Does it have to be attached or can it be a detached? Does that differ?
So if you were building a new primary structure, the garage would be attached.
Would have to be attached. We don't allow detached garages?
We do, but it'd be considered an accessory structure, not privy to the reduced front setbacks.
Ah, okay. So that's where you come in, that it has to be fifteen feet?
Correct.
Even though it says ten feet? This would be an accessory structure.
Accessory structure on a corner lot.
Out of the ten feet. Back to fifteen feet, which is a front yard dwelling.
Correct.
And to confirm here too, this garage that Mister Neff is proposing squeezed in now at five feet.
Yes.
Okay, um Mister Neff, can you get it to ten feet? Can you move that garage another five feet closer to your house? Away from Twelfth Street?
Can't move it five feet, but can you get from five to ten for the setback?
Yeah, can you get a ten foot step back, setback? Would you, we're, we're just nullifying your, your request basically by that question.
I mean, by, by combination of moving the garage closer to the house both, in both directions and by maybe limiting the length of the house from eighteen to seventeen or eighteen to sixteen.
The garage.
Yeah, no, we could squeeze it down.
Then you don't need to talk to us. If you can get it to ten feet.
Ten feet from the
Twelfth Street.
Ten, I think the garage right now is
I'm sorry, from the property line on Twelfth Street. Oh yeah, I'm, yeah, never mind. I am talking out of the side of my mouth. I apologize. It is fifteen feet.
Never mind.
I mean, is the major issue just the sightline?
No.
No.
Commissioner Boone?
So, we wanna be careful not to get confused that the, the setback for the buildings are from the property line. And the um setbacks for the sightlines are from the street. And that's a different point.
Yep.
So in, i- if you were to move it, say you can get it within two inches or something of the, of the existing house. You're not gonna get, you're not gonna get your um, your setback to the building unless you make it smaller. But if you made it smaller and moved it, you could, you could get there and then you wouldn't need a variance. And that's separate from the view line. Which is measured from a different point.
Yeah, this, this whole thing of having you know, Twelfth Street be considered a front yard. Yeah, it's not something I ever experienced in my years.
Well, don't think of it, don't think of it as a front yard. It's just that the setback needs to match the front yard. It's the same standard.
And you'll see that all, you'll see that all over town. I mean, there's lots of corner lots that have this kind of a situation that have to preserve sightlines and have bigger setbacks. It's, it's common.
Yeah, it's just that the, you know, currently if you go down the alley okay, you don't have that problem. It's just because of Twelfth Street being there. Yeah, so can we just tear up Twelfth Street?
Have you thought about putting this garage in front?
Uh, there's no way to put it in the front of the house.
Because?
One, that's where the utilities come in, the water lines, the sewer lines and the um gas line. And so there's no way to, you know, we just had everything dug up out there before it exploded.
Phil, is that even possible? Can you even get an access permit off of Venice for a drive, for a garage?
I think if you move the garage to the other front property line, he would probably still require a variance. Um I can't speak to curb cuts along Venice.
Well, it's more than thirty feet back. And he's only has to be fifteen and his garage is only fifteen feet wide. Possibly he gets it in there. If you looked at that, o- other than rerouting utilities, um or building over utilities. Others? Questions? Comments? Motions?
I mean, I, I assume this whole thing with the sightlines is a safety issue, which you know, I, I would take seriously, i.e. being able to be able to pull into the alley and not be blind to something in the alley that you try and avoid hitting. Okay, and so, you know, my argument would be is if you can, if we can meet the sightline requirements, what's required to do that? In terms of the size, structure, location of the, of the one car garage.
Let me ask you this because it's not clear to me. You're, you say your wife's garage. Where's that?
Uh, that's the one car garage that was part of the original structure.
It's, it is built in?
It's built.
Part of the house?
Yeah.
Okay. Does your garage fit into the um the knockout? I don't know how else to describe it. A, along Twelfth Street that the house is wide, then it gets narrower, then it gets wide again?
Um it's narrow towards the alley and then wide in the front.
Right.
Yeah.
In the middle, there's a little
There's a
Notch.
There's a little notch there with, that's where the bedroom is. And then that other structure that you see poking out from the maids, main structure of the house is a shed. That was attached, added on to the side of the garage.
Okay. And you can't rebuild that shed?
We could tear it out, but there's then all this wiring that goes other places around the house that go through that shed. I mean, it's yeah, I built my first house in Boulder from scratch. Okay, and I made sure everything worked. But when you're dealing with a house built in the early fifties and it's been added on and modified over the last fifty years you're sort of stuck with what you have and, you know, it's sort of like let sleeping dogs lie. Because once you get into the plumbing, the wiring, everything else in there, then, you know, it's, it's a can of worms.
I do follow that, but it, but that's not an insurmountable bit of bait. I mean, you could still fish with that. You'd have to get into that can of worms. Which undercuts the, the standard requirements that you need to be able to get the variance. You, you present a tough situation, sir.
Yeah, and, you know, we moved from a, you know, house with three levels and all these stairs and you know, my wife insisted on moving to a house that had just a single level because the dog and I were getting old. And, you know, we've been trying to make do with that. But I don't know what else to do other than to, you know, make the garage smaller, make it squeeze in, meet, you know, the you know, the requirements.
Yeah, and that's gonna be tough for you with this, a standalone garage. You're not gonna be able, i- in this corner. You're gonna have to lap off ten feet of it. Do it without a variance.
Without a variance, yeah. No, there's no way to do it without a variance. Okay, but what's practical right now is that back section of the yard is a bloody mess. That, you know, needs to be, you know, basically redeveloped to make it, you know, functional and attractive to the neighbors. Right now, it's a weed patch, a tree patch, you know. And just needs to be cleaned off with a big bulldozer. Because it is ugly. The rest of the property, we've totally re-landscaped and made looking really nice.
Well, um thank you. I'm, excuse me, I will recognize Commissioner Amat.
Okay, um, so I was looking at, uh, and this is just for my own clarification. I was looking at table fifteen oh three oh two oh two, and then do you notice at the bottom, it says refer to fifteen oh four oh four oh for accessory structure standards? So I'm curious why we're using it, the, the fifteen oh three oh oh two oh if from my understanding, this would be an accessory structure, so would we have to be using the oh four oh four oh for the setback standards or maybe I'm not following something there?
We're gonna follow both.
Okay.
The fifteen oh four oh four oh um does not lay out specific setbacks for accessory structures.
Okay. Good, thank you.
I'm sorry, Commissioner um Earl?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, I'm going to one piece of this that's making this clear to me and I'm we've talked a lot about different scenarios. There are potentials to move the garage have greater but not fifteen feet setbacks, get out of the sightlines, and so there are other options. Under our fifteen oh two oh six oh I five A, uh five F, a variance shall allow only the least deviation from the standard that will afford relief. I'm not convinced the proposal we have in front of us is the least deviation from the standard that will afford relief. I'm not sure if there's a way to avoid a variance period, but I'm not sure that, I don't think what we have in front of us is the least deviation. Um so I don't think it meets the criteria that's in front of us.
Thank you. As I was using, I was gonna go through the fifteen oh two oh six oh I five standards, um, you know, either special circumstances regarding the, the configuration of the property, possibly. Um it seems to be the primary problem here. But then all the different factors under A two is there any beneficial use without the variance? Sure. Um the degree to which the variance deviates from the otherwise applicable standard is rather large. is rather large. Um, did the applicant purchase the property with knowledge of the standard? I think the answer to that is no. Can the standard be addressed through some other means? Possibly, quite possibly. Um, we don't know, but possibly you put it in the front yard. Um, the purpose and intent behind the regulation can be maintained by granting the variance. I'm not really sure what the purpose is, other than that, um, they need to match on a corner, the setbacks, and we have sightline issues. And then as you indicated too, th- there are other issues. Does it nullify or impair the purpose and intent of the code? I don't think so. Um, will it adversely affect surrounding properties or the neighborhood? Maybe with the sightline problem. Um, shall not create building or fire code violations? Ostensibly, that's not an issue. Is it a self-imposed hardship? Possibly, insofar as there are other opportunities available to build yourself a garage here. They might be difficult, um, to overcome, but you know, putting this garage here is self-imposed, your, your decision. And is it the least deviation from the standard that can afford the relief? As Commissioner Earl just identified, there were a lot of different options that we talked about. Which makes this a very difficult, um, variance to grant. With that, are there any motions? Does anybody wanna make a motion? Shall I make a motion? I'm sorry. Vice Chair Polin.
I move that we deny this with PZR twenty twenty-five eleven C, a resolution of the Planning and Zoning Commission denying a variance allowed five foot setback where fifteen foot is required, and a variance allowed five foot rear setback where six feet is required for proposed detached garage located at eleven fifty-four Venice Street. I do believe that, um, as Commissioner Earl said, that there are other ways. You would probably need to still get a variance, but I think there are ways to minimize this so that the variance would be less affecting. If, if it can be done, I would be glad to see it again.
Is there a second? There's a second. Um, I will, I think Commissioner Earl seconded first. With that, can we call for a vote?
Commissioner Boone?
All right.
Vice Chair Polin?
Yes.
Com- Chair Height?
Regrettably, yes.
Commissioner Earl? Commissioner Armet? Chair, that, uh, motion passes five to zero.
That means I need to read this, um, which is at, um, this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, Agenda Item seven A, the eleven fifty-four Venice Street setback variance, um, was denied. There's appeal process, um, that's available. The item now enters a seven day appeal period. During this time, any agreed party may appeal this commission's decision by submitting a written appeal letter stating why the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision should be amended or reversed by City Council. All appeals must be in writing and must be received by the City Clerk's Office and the Planning Department and the Planning Office, I'm sorry, within the, the seven day appeal period. The appeal period begins tomorrow at eight AM and ends Wednesday, October first, at five PM. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item seven B, seven hundred Weaver Park Oh, yeah. The rest of our commissioners can come back. And we will start, um, Agenda Item seven B. Um, a- again, um, we're starting Agenda Item seven B, seven hundred Weaver Park Road, conditional use site plan, contractor shop in an existing building. Senior Planner Taylor is presenting again.
Good evening again, Phil Taylor, Senior Planner. I'm here to provide a brief overview on a u- a, a request for a conditional use as a contractor shop. So as introduced, the request to consider is to allow a contractor shop as a conditional use in an existing building. Per Section fifteen oh four zero two zero, a contractor shop is a conditional use in the mixed-use employment zone district. The property is located in the Weaver Business Park subdivision at the intersection of Weaver Park Road and Primrose Court. You can see Third Avenue to the north of the subject property and Rogers Road to the south. As we zoom in on the subject property, it totals one point zero four three acres and it is zoned mixed-use employment, which matches the envisioned long line designation. Uh, the most important information on this screen is to know that an approved site plan was done for this property in nineteen eighty-four to construct the building as seen here. This is the approved site plan from nineteen eighty-four. Um, and if this conditional use is approved, um, staff is recommending a condition of approval to require the applicant to bring the site into conformance with this approved plan. So things like restriping an ADA parking space, implanting any deficient landscaping on site would be conditions of approval. Uh, when I look at this and then look at that, I think they did pretty good. It's generally in conformance with the approved site plan from nineteen eighty-four. So again, the subject property is, uh, considered a land use designation of mixed-use employment, which is, which promotes a diversification of older employment areas, uh, encouraging a greater variety of employment spaces, uh, and provides flexibility for adaptive reuse of existing industrial buildings. Uses that are considered for this area include small-scale manufacturing, processing wholesaling, wholesaling, storage, office, and flex space. So you can now see the definition of a contractor shop from the land use code. And a bit of additional information provided from the applicant about how they intend to use the space. They are not pro- proposing any modifications to the site or the exterior of the building. They're not pro- promoting or proposing any signage on site, and they have, um, said there will be no outdoor storage. So if approved, staff is also recommending a condition of approval to prohibit outdoor storage, uh, because the applicant has said they do not intend to do it. So, again, here are review criteria for all application types. There are three options to consider this evening. Uh, commissioners can either approve, approve with conditions, or deny the conditional use site plan. And planning staff are recommending a conditional approval with the four, uh, conditions seen here. Again, no outdoor storage. Uh, the applicant will be required to bring the site up to compliance with the approved site plan. Um, they will be required to restripe the parking lot to meet current ADA standards, and they will be required to put in a new bicycle rack on site. These conditions are reflected in PZR twenty twenty-five eight B. Um, the applicant is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Advocate, do you wanna make a presentation for us?
Uh, Commissioners, thanks for having me. I'm Corey Cash. I'm the President of Sentinel Management and Touchstone Commercial Building Services. I really don't have much to add, um, to the, to the presentation that Phil made, but I am here to answer any questions or concerns you might have.
Thank you. Um, this is a public hearing. I will invite the public to comment if it wishes to. There being, according to Secretary Madrid indicating nobody has signed up and I'm not seeing anybody in the audience, I will close. Public invited to be heard. And open the matter to the floor for commissioners to ask questions, if they have any. You can sit down or stand up. Mr. Cash. Anybody? I'll start. Um, Phil, the no outside storage, are, would they otherwise be allowed to have outside storage? Other than they indicated that they didn't need to?
Yes, this use would be allowed to have outdoor storage.
Okay. With that, I'll turn the floor over to Commissioner Earl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alright, so Phil, quick question. In your presentation there, one of the primary uses for this zoning was it was something like light manufacturing, and I don't remember exactly the technical term that was used there. What is the definition of that and how does it vary from what we're talking about with a contractor shop? I mean, I recognize it's, there's a technical difference in the code. Practically speaking, what's the difference between those?
I am happy to pull up that definition. Give me one second.
Thank you.
While that's happening, Mr. Cash, can I ask you a couple of questions, um, concerning the conditions of approval? You're satisfied you don't need any outside storage?
That is not, not in our plan at this time.
Okay, um, striping for a handicap parking area, van accessible, is that a problem for you?
That is not a problem, no, sir.
And an inverted U bike lock system, is that a problem for you?
We will make that happen.
Alright. Phil, back to you.
So we have quite a few definitions. Um, we have a manufacturing and processing sort of general description. We have an artisanal manufacturing, light industrial, and medium industrial. I don't think we have a medium manufacturing or, but I'm happy to review any of those. Do I can read all of them?
No, I don't want you to read all of them. I'm sorry.
Um, but
That seems like way too much.
But in general, the use definition for manufacturing and processing, it says uses in this category include all transformative processes, regardless of whether or not the new product is finished or semi-finished. This used category includes the manufacturing, processing, fabrication, packaging, or assembly of goods. Natural, constructed, raw, secondary, or partially completed materials may be used. Products may be finished or semi-finished and are generally made for the wholesale market, for transferred other plants, or to order for firms or consumers. It goes on. Would you like me to continue?
No, I mean, I, I think that
They're not manufacturing really on site.
No, I know, well, understood. I mean, I, if I do understand correctly, it's foreign, is it an HVAC, um, contractor?
If I can answer that, please, um,
Yes, please.
So just to clarify, um, Touchstone is a facility service provider, and part of what we do is service commercial building HVAC units. So we are not your typical HVAC construction contractor. Um, so we are not fabricating ductwork on site every day. Um, we generally service commercial rooftop units on premises where they're located, not at our shop. So our shop is really to store materials to go out and change filters, change belts, uh, service, you know, compressors, et cetera. Um, and we have electricians. We do the same thing. We're changing LED lights, servicing electrical needs for commercial, uh, customers. We are not fabricating anything on site.
What does happen inside? Just storing materials?
Storing material or maybe preparing to go out to a project and do something, but, um, like, we're not a cabinet shop. We don't have machines where we're building cabinets. We might have a table saw, cause we might need to cut, uh, whiteboard, you know, down to size or, or something like that, but it's all custom one-off type things that our customers might need.
I mean, so the, the reason behind the question is, it, it sounds like you are, I mean, you are acting as a contractor shop. You are doing less impactful things than is allowed in the zone for something like, um, the industrial uses that is specifically allowed. And so I'm just trying to wrap my brain around m- m- make sure that we're not doing anything that actually is a more intense use. We are meeting a definition in granting this, not really changing the intent or the practical use of the site.
I bel- I believe that is a true statement. When you look at the neighboring properties, there's the dairy, uh, plant next to us. UPS distribution facility is behind us. There's Chrissy Construction and their construction yard down the street. Again, I'm not looking to do anything outside. Most people will have no idea that we're there. We have low traffic. You know, people that work in the, as you can imagine, you know, in a, in a facilities company that does most of their work servicing commercial real estate, um, the technicians are not on site, they're out on property. We have a much smaller percentage of people in the office.
And you had to give notice to folks within the vicinity, which at least from what I could see, it looked like it crossed Third Avenue.
It did. We had a hundred and fifty-three letters that had to go out to people across Third, Third Avenue.
Were, were there any comments received back? No?
I did not re- receive a single comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Vice Chair Polin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Phil, why is the city putting a condition of no outdoor storage if the applicant is not foreseeing adding storage?
If the applicant was willing to put that condition on himself, it seemed like an easier way to ensure there would be no disruptions to the neighborhood. So if he's willing to commit to that, and then it provides sort of a smoother transition for the conditional use, we thought it was a suitable condition.
Okay, but it is allowed. It would be allowed.
Yes.
And I'm assuming that there's probably areas where they wouldn't require variance to add a shed. They could add a shed without h- having come before us with a variance.
Yes.
Okay, and if in the future they want to add a shed, what is the process for that and does this prevent them from coming in the future?
So I'm, I may have misspoke. An expansion of a conditional use would require to come back.
Okay, so if in the future they want to add a shed, they would have to come back one way or another?
Correct.
Then I don't see why we need sixteen oh two. I, I, I understand that it would make things kind of flow maybe easier, but if he's not planning to do it right now, and if he's going to do it sometime, they're gonna have to go, come in and take another swing at us, I don't see why we need to add that as a condition. I, I, I'm all for the other three conditions. I just don't see a need for sixteen oh two. Looking forward to hearing from other commissioners their feelings on that.
Commissioner Boone?
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Polin. I don't think we need that number two condition about outdoor storage because, well, first of all, this is an easy ask for the applicant, in my opinion. And they don't need outdoor storage now, but it is allowed, um, in this zone for this use. So I don't think we need to put that as a condition. And that way, if things change down the road, you don't have to come and see us again.
No, he still has to come and see us.
Not if he's not building a shed.
Oh, not if he's not building.
Yeah, if he just has, I don't know, HVAC units sitting outside or whatever. Anyway, I, I would support, uh, the conditional use, um, with the conditions one, three, and four, and not ask for condition two.
Others?
I agree with
Hold on, let me recognize you, Commissioner Amat. Go ahead, thank you.
Sorry about that. Um, I'd agree with, uh, the, uh, s- one point six point oh two in PZR twenty twenty-five dash ten B not, not being necessary. So with that, I would move to, um, approve, or So with that, I would move to approve, or, yeah, I move to approve PZR 2025-10B with the modification that 1.6.02 is struck through. It is removed, I guess I should say.
Okay. Vice Chair Poland?
I'll second.
I'll second. Shall we vote? Any further comment before we vote? Recurring Secretary Madrid, poll us.
Commissioner Lang.
Aye.
Commissioner Boone?
Aye.
Vice Chair Poland?
Yes.
Chair Height?
Yes.
Commissioner Saunders?
Yes.
Commissioner Earl?
Yes.
Commissioner Arment?
Aye.
Chair, that passes unanimously, seven to zero.
Fantastic. Again, reading this, this notice of the Planning and Zoning Commission's meeting at September 24th, 2025, Agenda Item 7B, the 700 Weaver Park Road Conditional Use Site Plan Contractor Shop Existing Building was approved. Now, this process, sorry, this matter now enters the appeal process. The item has a seven-day appeal period. During this time period, any aggrieved party may appeal the Commissioner's decision by submitting a written appeal letter stating why the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision should be amended or reversed by City Council. All such appeals must be in writing, must be received by the City's Clerk's Office and the Planning Office within the seven-day period. The period begins tomorrow, Thursday, September 25th at 8:00 a.m., and ends Wednesday, October 1st at 5:00 p.m. Thank you very much. That concludes Item 7A and 7B. On the public hearing aspect, well, I'm not sure whether that Item 8 is a public hearing or not. It is not. It's other business. So, Agenda Item 8, Recycle Code Updates, being presented to us by Senior Environmental Sustainability Planner Zach Blazek. Hi, Zach.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners. Just one moment while I pull up my presentation. I really thought... Does it actually work on PowerPoint this time? Should I just stop messing with this and do it that way instead? Ah. Good evening again. Zach Blazek, Senior Environmental Sustainability Planner. I'm here this evening to share an info item about updates to our land use code considering recycling land uses. So, an indeterminate amount of time ago, certainly not exactly one calendar year, Council directed staff to pursue a Land Development Code Text Amendment to revise and expand on the definition of a recycling facility to allow a greater variety of recycling-oriented land uses here in the city. So I'm just gonna start by describing what we currently define as a recycling facility, which is an outdoor or indoor facility where recyclable material is collected, separated, and processed for shipment to a recycling plant or other facility for eventual reuse into new products. Recycling facilities may also include facilities where recyclable materials are recycled, remanufactured, or treated for reuse or production of new products, and does not include specifically vehicle salvage yards. So that's what we're working with. Right now, that use is permitted in the mixed-use employment and public facilities owned districts. And that's again by a conditional use review. So to summarize, here's how we are making changes to the code. There are gonna be two new use categories, which are collection facility and processing facility, and four new land uses that'll go in the table. That's a small collection facility, a large collection facility, a light processing facility, and a heavy processing facility. And then we're also making modifications to the table of allowed uses for all of these uses, and new use-specific or performance standards for each new land use. So, I'm gonna go over the categories first. A collection facility is a facility that receives pre-separated recyclable materials from the public or from business or commercial generators. So that's kind of your more traditional, again, this is like your regular recycling facility. And then a processing facility is a facility used for sorting, cleaning, treating, and packaging recyclable materials. These facilities may include mechanical equipment. They do not include vehicle salvage yards or auto dismantling yards, waste transfer stations where recyclable materials are not the primary material handled, or facilities handling hazardous biomedical or e-waste unless it's specifically permitted. A small collection facility is a collection facility that occupies an area of 500 square feet or less, may consist of portable bins, kiosks, trailers, or containers, serves walk-up or drive-through traffic, and does not use power-driven processing equipment. This is the type of thing you would traditionally see posted up in a neighborhood, or, you know, near a small commercial-type use area where people can either walk up or drive up and drop off their recycling. A large collection facility is a collection facility that occupies an area of more than 500 square feet, may include permanent structures, limited baling, sorting, or compaction of materials. My best example of this would be the Longmont Recycling Facility over on Martin Street. A light processing facility is a processing facility which is under 45,000 square feet and processes only source-separated recyclable materials. Light processing facilities do not accept or handle hazardous waste. So, again, this is kind of more trending towards the industrial use of processing recycled materials. And a heavy processing facility is a processing facility which exceeds 45,000 square feet, handles mixed or contaminated materials, and/or involves shredding, grinding, or chemical treatment of materials. Heavy processing facilities may accept and process hazardous waste. So this is your most intense of all the land uses. This is a table showing the changes that we'll make to the table of allowed uses. You can see for the employment and primary employment zone districts, all of these uses are permitted except for a heavy processing facility, which is permitted by conditional use. And then I'll get to the small collection facility towards the end. The next thing we're changing is the addition of use-specific standards. So in blue, we have all of the kind of unique specific standards for each use. Small collection facilities in the mixed-use corridor will not be permitted on properties adjacent to Main Street. Large collection facilities and light processing facilities shall not be located closer than 250 feet from any residential use or residential lot in a residential zone district. And heavy processing facilities should not be located closer than 1,000 feet from any residential use in a residential zone district. And then for all of these uses, all materials shall be stored within an enclosed building or totally screened from view by a minimum eight-foot masonry wall, and operating hours will be limited from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The last thing we're asking from you all is for some feedback. To answer the question, should small collection facilities be allowed by right or by conditional use review in the mixed-use neighborhood and mixed-use corridor zoning districts? In favor of by right, it expands accessibility of these smaller facilities to more residential and commercial land uses in their proximity, making recycling more available and accessible readily in Longmont. On the flip side, conditional use allowances may provide the opportunity to apply a more unique condition to each site or require a more comprehensive evaluation. The flip side of that is, you know, having a more intense process means you might not get as many applications otherwise. So, that is the extent of my presentation and the changes we're presenting. Here to take any feedback you have and listen to discussion. Thanks.
Vice Chair Poland?
Zach, so, real quickly, on the small site drop-off area, where you're basically saying 10, 500 square foot, which is 10 by 50, I'm, I'm trying to think of the size of a bin that would be placed in an area like that, because it's not a building. It's just kind of, as you said, probably just setting up a bin to collect recyclable stuff. And I'm trying to think why we wouldn't want to allow that by right. And it's already not along Main Street, right?
Correct.
And what's the other condition that-
That's the only one specific to small collection facilities. It's just, it's just the screening and the operating hours otherwise.
I'm okay with it being by right. That's, I, I, I guess we can maybe take this one at a time. If we can just knock out the small collection facility and just see what other people think if it should be by right or conditional. And that, therefore, somebody wanted to put up a 10 by 50 bin, they would have to come to us for that?
If it were conditional, yes.
Okay. Looking forward to hearing other opinions.
I got a question about it. I'm sorry. I will recognize Commissioner Earl before I chat on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You would have been fine to go ahead, but thank you. I, I guess I'm just trying to understand, and, and this is not directly to the Vice Chair's question, but who is likely to actually be trying to put up these facilities? I mean, we provide, we, the city, provide the recycling services now. We have a free drop-off space at the existing facility. Is this likely more city-run type operations? Or kind of, what, what is the use case and why is this kind of a proposed new criteria?
Yeah, not necessarily city operation, although it could be. It's not necessarily. We've had customers come in requesting a variety of different recycling-related land uses that are not permitted under the current land use definition. And that's why Council gave us the direction, was just to generally expand on what we currently allow and what we currently don't allow.
Okay. And I, and I understand the processing, the large colle-, I mean, I understand those. I'm really just the small collection facility. I, I guess I just don't understand the use, and maybe that's because I live in a single-family neighborhood and have curbed lid recycling, and therefore don't have a need to, and, you know, they need to change that perspective. I'm just trying to understand it, I guess, a little bit more.
Yeah, the, the general purpose, right, is for folks who maybe don't have the ability to get in the car and drive to the recycle center, or they don't live in a place that has access to that single-serve. So, being able to walk from their house or ride their bike to a facility where they can recycle as opposed to throwing stuff in their dumpster, right?
Thanks.
Yep.
I'm gonna jump ahead. And my query is, why the eight-foot wall? Is that gonna be a problem in residential areas? Is it gonna go all the way around the facility, or is it just three sides, one side? What's the eight-foot wall, masonry wall, all about?
Well, the purpose of that is just to provide screening, you know, from what is essentially, right, for these small facilities, it's essentially a place where people are leaving their refuse, right? So, with any other development, the practice is that those areas are screened by a masonry wall or some other type of screening structure. It's just really the, the standard practice.
Okay. Give me an example of other things that we require that for. For trash receptacles?
Yeah.
In multi-family housing?
Great example, yep.
Okay. And is that three sides, or, and then a fence in front? How does that work? I don't know off the top of my head.
Typically, we see those with three sides masonry and one side with some level of accessibility for trucks to come in and take the dumpsters out.
Okay. And and, and I'll recognize Commissioner Boone.
Thank you. I'm a little bit leery to do it by right. I'm fine with having conditional, I'm fine at looking at a number of conditional uses. And if we get 10 or 20 of them in the next year, and they're all fine, then I might change my mind. But I think we're gonna get caught letting it happen by right and end up with a situation that we would prefer not to be there. And I don't mind looking at a conditional use for these. I think it would be a, a really quick agenda item to look at them, just to make sure that we're not missing something. Because if it's by right, we, we might, we might miss something. That could be a problem. What would that be? I don't know. I just think we might miss something.
Commissioner Saunders?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with Commissioner Boone, and I agree with Zach. I agree that it'd be great to have more accessibility, but that this is sort of a new deal, and we're already starting to run scenarios about what it could look like. I think we get into a trap by doing it by right rather than looking at conditional uses, I mean, at least in the beginning, and see what types of scenarios we come up with. Wh- who's code enforcement on this? Like, who would be, could, City of Longmont would service this, recycling, correct?
No, not necessarily. It could be private commercial uses.
Okay. So who then, is it then building enforcement, building code enforcement? Who would enforce how it is closed 7 to 7, right? It's open 7 to 7?
Yeah, that would, that would be, if something was out of conformance, that would go back to code enforcement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, well, I, I still think that I'm on the conditional use side of this.
Commissioner Arment, Armand, I'm sorry?
Okay. I noticed that in collection facility, we, it specifically defines pre-separated recyclable materials. Now, from my understanding, Boulder County Recycling Center over in Boulder, it's single-stream, so those materials will not be pre-separated. Is there a reason why the pre-separated distinction was made? In the same vein, I believe light processing also specifies source-separated. Is there a reason why we're specifying source separation for both of these, rather than allowing single-stream?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, a lot of the research that I did, kind of going into how these things are specifically defined, that's something that I came across again and again as a standard practice. It's something we could think about looking back into, but it's, it's one of those things where we, we have these very specifically defined facilities in the sense that, you know, if, if a commercial use wanted to go in and do the small collection facility, right, they would have to make sure that everything is clearly defined. A lot of the examples that I found also showed clearly defined, here's material one, here's material two, here's material three. And then, you know, they go back to their processing facility and handle the separation from there. Is the most common way that I saw it.
Okay. So then also, why in light processing are we specifying that it has to be source separated arriving? At, at least in my mind, that's putting an operational, wait, yes, process only source separated. I'm assuming that means that it would mean source separated when it arrives, or would we allow, yeah, because heavy processing says for sorting. So, why are we putting their, is there a logic behind why we're putting the, if you want to sort materials, you have to be a large proc, count as a heavy processing?
Yeah, I mean, those, those types of land uses, we want to make sure are remaining in the primary employment or mixed employment zone districts. Does that make sense? Like, those uses are limited to those zone districts specifically.
Okay. I, I guess just in my mind, the-
And they're both permitted and have the same kind of size requirements in the same, so if, if it's a collection facility or a processing facility, they're both allowed to operate the same way in the primary employment or the mixed-use employment zone districts.
Okay, okay. So it'd just be the difference between basically conditional use for the heavy processing, no matter what? Okay.
Yeah, and that comes down to whether they're doing hazardous materials, or kind of what they're actually working with at that point.
Well, I mean, it sounds like from the definition, even if they're just sorting materials, that requires a conditional use.
If it's greater than 45,000 square feet.
What if, what if it's less than that and they're sorting? Because light processing specifies source separated.
I think it can be both.
Because it says process is only source separated. So in my mind, that would mean that the materials would have to arrive at the facility source separated. Is that a fair interpretation, or?
Yeah, I think that's a fair interpretation. Because this is all, the, the heavy processing is an and/or statement. So handles mixed or contaminated materials, mixed being the not source separated. So yes, to answer your question.
Okay. So then basically we're saying if you are handling single stream, non-single stream, if you're handling non-source separated materials, that instantly makes it a conditional use?
Yeah. And my understanding is that those types of facilities, typically you would see those exceed 45,000 square feet. Those are not small facilities that we'd see kind of going into the small types of infill sites that we might have here in Longmont.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Zach, I got a question. How many heavy facilities could we accommodate at 1,000 feet away from a residential area and zoned in the zoning districts where they're proposed to be in? Like, could we put one in? Do you have any idea?
That's not an answer I have off the top of my head. No, we didn't do an analysis.
I was just wondering.
Yeah. There is quite a lot of undeveloped land in the non-residential primary employment zone specifically on the west side of town. So, we, we just kind of, you know, going over this, feel that there is a lot- So we, we just kind of, you know, going over this feel that there is a lot of possible land available for a use like that.
On the west side of town. Okay, interesting. Um, Vice Chair Poland.
Zach, um, what triggered this to come? I mean, have there been requests from applicants for this kind of use? And if so, can you like give an example of what a use case might be?
Uh, there were a couple of inquiries to council uh over a year ago, and that's what triggered this, which was council giving us direction to just generally expand the land use. Um, the one example that I'll share is that Green Girl wanted to open a more intensive processing facility. And um our current definition with that zone district did not permit it. So whether that will come forward, we don't know. Um, again, it was over a year ago. So this is more in response to council than to any specific customer inquiry.
Okay. Thank you. Um, another question. Um, based on what this says then, that the large collection zo- area off of Martin, if it were not there, it would not be able to go there now because of the new development that is off of Martin just south of Third? Would that be two hundred fifty feet?
I think that one would be two hundred fifty feet. So I'm not sure if it would need it or not.
Okay.
Or if there would be additional standards.
Okay.
But since it's already there, right, it's.
Yeah, exactly. I'm just, as a example, I'm trying to think of.
Yeah.
As an example.
I'm not, I can't like visualize that off the.
It is right across the street.
Yeah.
Okay, because there is a building between the recycle center and the road.
I think there's the train tracks on one side or the other. It might be on the other side. It might be, I think that recycling facilities on the north side of the tracks, I think I got that wrong, but yeah, there's some level of separation right now.
I'm just trying to get in my mind of.
Sightline problem.
An example. Okay, that's all I have for right now.
We picked two hundred fifty for that one, again, simply just based on industry standard. Not because of any existing uh facility here.
What other questions did you have, Zach? Flip a page. Did you have more that you want? Okay.
No, I was just simply interested in your feedback. So.
Sure, keep going.
So would this then be for the, I'm, I'm getting back to the small collection. Would this be similar then to, let's say, a storage shed kind of application? So that if somebody doesn't have that currently and they want to put it in, let's say somebody wants to drop in a ten by fifty bin to collect leaves or something, um, do they have to come, do they just go to the director? How does that work? Because it's kind of a change from the site plan, correct? If they want to drop one of these onto a site?
As in like add it to an existing site that?
Yeah.
Let's say it's uh in the corridor zone district and I have a commercial use and I want to add a recycling kiosk to my parking lot type thing. We would look at that through probably a site plan waiver, I would expect, if we're allowing it by right.
Okay.
Um, and even we could do it as a site plan waiver and bring it for, or we could do a short site plan review and bring it for conditional use review if we go that route. But that kind of depends on um which path we take.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I don't expect those would be long or uh difficult reviews for staff or for you guys to look at and think about either way. But of course, you know, who knows, right?
Anyone else want to weigh in? Add in? Share?
Your feedback's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Zach.
Thanks.
Whoops, I'm sorry.
Oh, Commissioner Ramon.
I apologize. Um.
Good, so there was a discussion of M U C and what was the other one that you were looking for? M U N?
Yeah, mixed neighborhood. Both of those are kind of more adjacent uh zone districts to where we would traditionally see residential zoning.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'm trying to remember because I know M U C generally is pretty light on residential, right? But then M U N, I believe, has more. Um, is that the distinction there or?
It's more like both of them, and again, we don't have, I didn't like do a G I S study to figure out percentages of adjacency or things like that. But looking at the zoning map, right, the purple zone district and the, it's like a salmon pink zone district. Both of those are typically adjacent to um residential in some fashion.
Okay.
And the point is to increase accessibility to places where people can walk for their recycling.
Okay, that makes sense then.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Super. Appreciate it. Do you think you'll come back to us, Zach, or you're gonna move it forward? Do you need us to approve it?
No, no further action is necessary. I will carefully consider all of your feedback and we will move on to council from here.
Fantastic. Well, thank you. I'm gonna close this issue.
Alright.
And open up um the final call for the public to speak if it cares to. Not seen anybody. Nobody on the list. I'll close that. Um, and go to item number ten, which is whether or not there are any items from the commission to share inter say. Seen none of that. Um, we'll at least address whether or not there are issues from this, the council representative who is not here. Um, we'll move on to item twelve, items from the planning director. Your turn.
I'll be brief. Uh, I think I mentioned last month, um, I give an overview and I'll just do a quick repeat of the approximate eight or nine items that we have that we're trying to get on by the end of the year. Um, we had discussed uh the next meeting being October fifteenth. Um, some of you are very familiar with it since it came before council. Um, I'll describe it as um garnering significant public interest. So I would at least like to propose, if it does land on October fifteenth, it's a preliminary plat, by the way, um, that we might entertain a six PM start. Um, can't predict, of course, what that looks like, but I thought I would throw that out there. And then just to roll through kind of the remainder of the year, what we're looking at. Um, as I mentioned last time, uh, October twenty second, again, the, the second meeting in the month would be two conditional uh use site plans. November nineteenth, we did contemplate an annexation, but it looks like that is going to get pushed out. Um, don't know the exact date and it may not hit in uh this year. It may get moved to the next. And then the only meeting in December uh that we have scheduled, uh, one conditional use site plan. And then also one uh code amendment. So uh referring to both November and December, some of that might get adjusted to accommodate again. Um, that annexation that I noted won't, won't likely be in November, so if we could shift the code amendment, um, depending on timing, that, that might happen. But uh, again, going back to the fifteenth, if uh, again, the commission would entertain uh an early start, we'd like to get feedback.
Be the only item on that agenda?
That would be the intent, yes, absolutely.
Six o'clock's not too difficult for me. Others? Fifteenth?
I think we're gonna need it.
I don't know it, but if it's gonna be contentious, um, and yeah, and not wanting to go to midnight, I would, you know, eleven o'clock's better than midnight.
I, I would not be sad to be incorrect, but just planning for it. That's all I have.
Good enough. Thank you very much. Legal counsel, you want to talk? Appreciate it. Um, I think we're adjourned. Thank you all.